I'm Jeff Cowan, I'm the Dean of the Annenberg School for Communication, and I am so pleased to welcome you all here this evening for the first of a wonderful series of events that we'll be having during this fall. I think most of you got copies of this yellow sheet of paper, in any case if you didn't I will hold it up and you'll get it as you leave this evening, which will tell you about a lot of the other exciting things we have coming up, including the next event, which is about sports journalism, including Fred Clair, Terry Bradshaw, Pam Schreiber, and Kevin Fraser. But I can't think of a more appropriate way to start this series, or a more appropriate person to engage in a serious dialogue than our guest tonight. And I always have wanted to say that I introduce somebody that I knew them when, and I feel that in Alex Padilla's case, we can all say, we knew him when he was still in his twenties. But he was also already known as Mr. President. We have in the office, in the auditorium today, I should say, also somebody who we all know as Mr. Mayor, and that is the Mayor for Life of Hollywood, Johnny Grant, who's a regular here in Johnny's state. And those who want their star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame should applaud particularly loud. The program this evening is going to be introduced in the formal introduction of our guests, and we may have Tom Hollihan. Tom, as those of you at the school know, is the Associate Dean for Academic Affairs, but more importantly, is a major scholar in the field of political rhetoric and communication, and runs a program called Student Voices, in which several hundred high school students around the country became involved in the last mayoral campaign. It's a terrific program, and I think some of the students and high school teachers who were part of it may even be here this evening. In any case, to serve as moderator this evening and to introduce our very special guest, Professor Tom Hollihan.
Thank you, Jeff. I think I might -- can everyone hear me? Is the mic on? Councilman Padilla, welcome to the Annenberg School. And I guess we should begin by figuring out if you prefer to be called Mr. Councilman or Mr. President.
How about Alex?
How about Alex? I thought Mr. President--
If you say Mr. Councilman, I still kind of look over my shoulder.
I thought you'd think Mr. President had a kind of a nice ring to it.
Well, I guess it's still growing up.
Your first few weeks as President of the L.A. City Council have certainly been interesting, to say the least. And I think it's fair to say that your press reviews of those first few weeks have been somewhat mixed. Your first step out of the box may have gotten you bruised a little bit, but from everything that I've seen and read, at least in the media, recently, people seem to think that you acquitted yourself fairly well with the last bit of events. Talk to me a little bit about what it's like to step into a position like this and to have so many things happen so quickly, and is there anything that can really prepare you for being in the public arena in quite this way?
I don't think so. Not that I know of. If there is, then I wouldn't have majored in mechanical engineering. But first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming. This is great. It's not just a welcome to the Annenberg School, but a welcome back. Soon after my first election and before I was named Chair of the Information Technology Committee, there was a forum here in this room about Internet access over cable lines. I see Francisco Rivera here from Verizon, and they were pretty involved with that. You know, the last couple of months, in terms of preparation, or hitting the ground running and things like that, I don't know. I'm not kidding when I say it's still kind of sinking in. These last two years have been tremendous. So it's not just the visibility and the activity that comes with being Council President, but just sheerly an elected official. And maybe it's a little bit me being here in the city of Los Angeles, the second largest city in the country, and the big media market that it is, that's your expertise. But I'm a public servant. It may sound corny, but I'm trying to do a good job first and think about the public image second. My press deputy is here. I won't point him out, so he doesn't get ambushed later. You know, it's his job to make sure that the good work that we're trying to do and that are doing gets promoted and gets out there, because people need to know about it. But I would hope that I'm never the type of elected official, or politician, and not always a bad word, that isn't legislating for the sake of headlines, or for the sake of being on at 11 o'clock at night. So, you know, I want to put that out there first, because everything that I've done for the last two years, focusing on public safety, focusing on, you know, filling more potholes and fixing more sidewalks in my district, investing in programs for young people, and even now, the additional responsibilities as being Council President, whether it was the, you know, committee assignments or other appointments that I get to make, or changing the committee structure as we did, or even unexpected circumstances like we experienced last week, always first and foremost in my mind is trying to do a good job. And a lot has happened in a short amount of time.
You're very much a product of Los Angeles, growing up in a Los Angeles neighborhood and understanding this community from having that experience. So you understand the kind of complexity of Los Angeles and the fact that a city without a geographic center, as this one has sometimes said not to have, and perhaps without a cultural center, but instead a city of neighborhoods, poses unique problems for people who would try to communicate with citizens across the expanse of culture and class and ethnic identity, et cetera. What do you see as the secret to trying to craft a civic identity for the city of Los Angeles?
It's tough. I mean, we really have to try to understand one another, and that begins with dialoguing and maybe experiencing each other's communities. I recall when I was in the third grade, in the era of busing in L.A. USD, I think some of the students here can recall that, whether you were sort of shipped off to a school in another community, or there was these students coming in from schools outside your community. That was an exchange, a social exchange, that we were experiencing, whether we were cognizant of it or not, but we looked back. And, you know, so that's one thing I tend to think about every once in a while. Or when I was in high school, I used to play, I grew up playing baseball, Little League, and then three years in high school. And especially in high school, we were traveling at least once a week to play a team from a different school, and we traveled all over the San Fernando Valley, all over the city of Los Angeles. And I began to see firsthand the differences, the sometimes inequities, from school to school and community to community. That's when you begin to appreciate or recognize that although we are one big city, each community is different. Now, flash forward today, from a public service perspective, I still think all people, all families fundamentally want the same thing. We all want and deserve a safe community to live in. You know, we all want to be able to look out of the front window in the morning and see the trash being picked up on this trash day, you know, streets in fairly good condition, sidewalks, you know, good schools locally for our kids, parks to play in, you know, those are really the fundamentals. Now, as we go from Pacoima, where I live, to San Pedro, where my colleague Janice Hahn lives, to the south part of Los Angeles, to the east side, to the west side, I think each localized community has its uniqueness in terms of landmarks, in terms of, no, this is the best restaurant around, and this tends to be the hangout. If, for people who were cruising in high school, you know, in the San Fernando Valley, it's Laurel Canyon, or it's Crenshaw, or it's Hollywood Boulevard, depending on where you go. So each community has its unique treasures and its unique challenges, but I think fundamentally, there is a common string that ties us all together as people and as Angelinos.
Is there no small irony in the fact that at the moment, we have a mayor who comes from San Pedro, and a City Council President who comes from the San Fernando Valley, two sections of the city that seem ready and willing maybe to secede from the rest of the city?
In part. You know, I think, in my election, I don't know how much, I don't know the detailed part of the strategy from the mayoral campaign, but it was a topic of conversation amongst my colleagues. You know, with arguably the largest threat or proposal for secession coming from the San Fernando Valley, as a city, we were going to have that debate, we were going to have that campaign, we were going to have measure on the ballot with, you know, representatives from the San Fernando Valley reflected in the city's leadership or not. You know, and what kind of message or the context or message do you want to provide for the people of the valley before they casted their vote? By the same token, I think, you know, we upped the ante a little bit, because if we're able to turn around and deliver services more effectively and more efficiently to communities throughout the city, then, you know, we're making the argument against secession. If we're not, and here I am from the San Fernando Valley in the position that I'm in, then we give those who wish to have the city break up yet another argument. See, even when you were in a position of leadership, you weren't able to improve things, so yet another reason to want to divide the city.
How do you confront this issue of access to city services and resources, which seems to be the primary claim that secessionists, especially in the valley, make, when in fact it's probably arguable that you get your streets cleaned more often, you get your garbage picked up more dependably, you can get a police response quicker in the valley than you can in many other neighborhoods, for instance, as you mentioned, in the east side or in south central L.A.?
Well, first of all, I warn about generalizing like that.
I guess I live in the east side, so I'm generalizing from my--
Well, the area that I live in the valley is not like, you know, other areas of the valley or other areas, you know, south of Mulholland. You know, you mentioned police response time, it's actually a little bit longer in the valley than it is statewide because of the nature of the valley, everything is very spread out. There's only five stations to cover the entire San Fernando Valley, so response time in and of itself is a challenge. How do we counter that? Was that the question?
Well, how do you counter a valley eagerness to secede, because they're so frustrated with not getting service, when in fact, they may live relatively well off compared to residents in many other parts of L.A.?
Again, hoping not to generalize. When I was first running for office two years ago, now two and a half years ago, I sort of did it the old-fashioned way. I went door to door, right? Every, I have a weakness over here. Every day for six months, hours and hours on end, anywhere between, you know, four and eight hours a day. So I talked to a lot of people in their living rooms and at the doorstep. I'm not counting the political forums or the candidate debates, this is talking to voters in their home. After six months of campaigning, I was asked about secession from people in my district a total of six times. That's not a lot. I'll tell you what they did ask me. They were asking me, if you get elected, are you going to fill the potholes? If you get elected, are you going to, you know, do something about graffiti? What are you going to do to help kids? What are you going to do to help schools? So even within the San Fernando Valley, I think the sentiments for or against secession aren't entirely for it. That's just in my district. I would argue that there's parts of, you know, Van Nuys, parts of Cunego Park, that will be more mixed. Newspapers and how they cover secession may lead you to believe differently. And again, public policy, in part, yes, we do have to take into account what the press, what the media is reporting or conveying, but we have to balance that with, you know, what is a responsible way to make our decisions? How do we become informed? And that is through knowing communities, talking to people in their homes or at the grassroots level.
Potholes have come up a couple times, since my car bears recent damage from a pretty deep pothole traveling through Chinatown. It's a topic I'm sensitive to. But I'm curious as to whether or not Alex Padilla wants to be defined as a pothole fixer or a vision guy. And so I want to give you a chance to talk about how you communicate, what your vision is for L.A., and not focus for a moment on the potholes and the graffiti.
Well, see, I think they go hand in hand. You know, my vision for Los Angeles is to give the people of Los Angeles that basic comfort, that basic quality of life. I mean, whether you live in Pacoima, or Brentwood, or anywhere throughout the city, you know, everybody deserves and should have, you know, streets in decent condition, sidewalks in decent condition, safe communities, you know, libraries and parks within the area for families to enjoy. That is my vision. It may not be a vision of, you know, a new or doubled skyline in Los Angeles--
Well, I'm not sure bigger is better for the moment.
Very true. Or, you know, of a new baseball or football stadium, that's not on my agenda, at least not right now. I know that there's maybe more aggressive or visionary, if this is the context you're using that word in, of, you know, public transportation, housing, other significant long-term policy issues and infrastructure and investment issues for the city of Los Angeles. I do hope to play a part in meeting those long-term challenges for the city.
Well, I think there are people who would like to see the city, in a sense, reinvent itself and become the city of the 21st century, instead of the kind of example that it often seems to be of the failed experience of 20th century sprawl. And fixing potholes may make people, you know, happier to some extent, but I'm not sure if it moves Los Angeles forward in the way it could. And so I think that's why I posed that question, isn't it, Jeff?
Well, you know, I would argue that any kind of development, investment that we hope to see in the city, whether it's in improving our housing stock and adding to it, or economic developments, we have to lay the foundation for a type of community that people would want to live in, or people would want to open a big business in, or people would want to develop, or people would want to maintain, like areas in the exploded basin in the valley, or Hanson Dam, in and around Griffith Park, some of the different, you know, treasures that we have throughout the city. It all goes back to those fundamentals. So, you know, I think we're saying the same thing, just differently, that they do go hand in hand.
I want to turn briefly to the topic that I'm really supposed to talk about today, rather than the stuff I necessarily want to talk about, which is to focus briefly on at least communication. This is a city where we're blessed with at least one newspaper and often two. They do an excellent job of covering, I think, city politics and local news. We're a city, however, we're local. Television does an abysmal job of covering local politics. And I would cite just one example. On one day in May that was of particular importance to me, because we had an important political event that brought both the mayoral candidates together, and it was a day where it was President Bush's first visit to California after his election. We did a content analysis study, and two of the local network affiliate TV stations in this city did not mention either of those stories, did not even mention politics as an issue that was potentially of concern to people who lived in this area. Given that the reach of those television networks is so far beyond the city limits, and in fact, that, you know, they, when they think about their audience, often don't think about Los Angeles residents, what are the challenges that you find in getting the news media to talk about political issues that address the city's concerns and the voters' of the city's concerns in a way that you can create an informed electorate?
Wow, that's tough. But it is a challenge. I mean, there's things that we do, accomplishments that, you know, I think my office has legislatively, you know, we get a project approved and funded, that we love to have a press conference about, or at least we'd love to get coverage on. And it is a challenge to get the attention and a priority from either the reporters or the media in itself, it's television, newspaper, radio. And so we just have to constantly try everybody at once, and hopefully somebody bites. You know, again, the media is one vehicle. I balance that with, you know, what's really important is that the people find out about it. So within my district, we're constantly sending out just letters to constituents. We're also notoriously known for, not just me, like, two years, two and a half years ago campaigning by myself, but now I have a staff that is not unwilling, that is not unwilling, to roll up their sleeves, take off their coats, go knocking on doors and distribute information. Part of it goes back to relationships. I do have to admit, I'm not a press expert, I'm not a media expert. I tried to hire one. And so one of the very first hires that I did after being elected was of a press secretary. Actually, that's not even his title, his title's Director of Communications, because the press and the free media is only one vehicle. We also have a website. We have, like I said, a mailing program. There's different ways to try to put the message out there. I think reporters, and this is a guess, you're the expert, will, over time, learn, you know, maybe of an image or a reputation that individual political figures or office holders will have, in terms of substance of what they're working on, you know, are they calling for a press conference every other day so you don't take it as seriously? Or is it less often, so, you know, maybe you bought out of listen this time? But we've been fortunate, you know, not always great press, but for the most part, it's been pretty consistent, pretty good, not because I think it's me, but because of what we're working on.
One of the problems here is that only one local television station really has a political reporter anymore, and most of them use general assignment reporters who may cover a political story on their way to a car accident or a helicopter chase.
Well, there's been a couple of, I think, print reporters that have made their way onto television, like Breakstone with CBS, and John Schwada with Fox. You have, I think, KCAL, being a leader and having three hours of evening news program, eight, nine, and 10 o'clock news programs, not just a one, a half hour.
I want to change gears again, just a little bit. To what extent are you the youngest City Council President? To what extent are you the Latino City Council President? To what extent are you just the City Council President? How do you, how do you deal with the fact that it's so easy to describe you as and to put that adjective in front of any description?
It was frustrating when I first got elected. I think for the first several months, not that it was often, whenever my name would appear in the newspaper, it was always 26-year-old Councilman Alex Padilla. When am I just going to be a councilman? Over time, that kind of went away. When I became President, kind of, yeah, 28-year-old Council President, that went away. It's not on my mind on a daily basis, I'm just trying to do the best job that I can. When I first got elected, I think it was a challenge. I knew it was going to be on people's minds, because I was not a City Hall insider. When I walked into City Hall as a council member, I hadn't worked on another council member's staff, I hadn't held a political office before. I had served the city as a Building and Safety Commissioner, but that was not exactly the most visible or high-profile of positions. And here I was, sitting on a horseshoe with people who had been on the council longer than I had been alive. That's true. And so I'm sure some of them were thinking, especially some of them who had endorsed my opponent, were thinking, oh, who is this guy? Is he just a fluke? Did he get lucky in his election? Is he a product of a political machine? You know, is this guy for real? So knowing that that was on some people's minds, the age was on some people's minds, I really felt a pressure to need to establish myself, to establish my credibility as a peer, as a colleague, to let them know that I was intending on having insightful conversations with them, you know, bringing in new ideas, but wanting to work in as part of that system. And it took a while, but I think we accomplished that. I remember one of the early tests was a discussion about neighborhood councils. The city, the new city charter had just been adopted, and we were in the process of, you know, taking the steps necessary to create a Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and establish the process for the creation of neighborhood councils. And I had campaigned on that when I was running. I had supported the charter, and I highlighted neighborhood councils. So the council debates, we're going around the horseshoe, and I got up and I spoke, I said my piece. A council member spoke immediately after me and started his comments with, well, Alex, you're young, you just got here, and you don't know what we know. And when he said that, there was a collective gasp in council chambers. Again, I knew that was on people's minds, but I think it shocked everybody that somebody was so blunt about it. But I'm glad that happened. And it was a test, personally, I was fuming, and I was going to stand up and, you know, say, you're, you don't know what you're talking about, and I was prepared to be called out of order, and I had my response. And then I thought to myself, no, let me let him finish, because we each get three minutes. And then I was going to sort of start the yelling match. And in those three minutes, I said, you know, let me just take a deep breath, push my button again, kind of went around, came back to my turn, and they rebutted what my colleague had said, and at the end of the day, you know, my, not my side prevailed, but basically the things I was supporting did get approved. So that was, I think, a big milestone in being able to put that behind me. Now, as Council President, again, I think I had done such a good job, I feel, with my colleagues in developing the relationship with them, with them having the confidence and the trust in me to be able to serve in the capacity as Presidents, with age not being an issue, with ethnicity not being an issue. So that's first and foremost. Now, being Latino, I'm very proud of it. And just last week, you know, I was able, it was really a privilege and an honor, when we were having those press conferences at such a time of tension and chaos and concern, to be able to convey directly to the public in more than one language. You know, being young allows me to, you know, put in those extra hours that I may not have the energy to in, you know, 20, 30, or 40 years, or to relate to college students, high school students, and other young people, to encourage them to be involved in the political process. There's people that have come up to me and tell me, finally, somebody I can relate to, or, you know, people in their 20s and in their 30s saying, I always thought about running for office, and now you show me that it's possible. I thought I was going to have to wait 20 years, wait my turn. So I think those are added benefits.
In the recently completed mayoral campaign, you were one of the most vocal and strong supporters for Mayor Hahn, and didn't avail yourself of the opportunity to support another Latino candidate, Antonio Villarosa, which puts you pretty deeply at odds with a lot of the political leadership in the Latino community, and indeed with the voters of your own council district, who went very heavily for Villarosa and didn't follow your lead. Any thoughts, first of all, on is it going to create some problems with you making peace with Latino political leaders, or your own supporters, or any misgivings about not taking the opportunity to help make a first with the election of a Latino mayor?
Well, first of all, I want to say that the decision I made to support Jim Hahn for mayor, I believed then, and I still believe now, was the right thing to do, and that's why I did it. It wasn't an easy decision, but I believe it was the right decision. In some ways, it was very, very tough. I mean, yes, I was going against the Democratic Party, I was going against organized labor, I was going against a lot of Latino leaders who, not just in terms of going against them, but had supported me when I first ran for office. So there's a whole question of, you know, do I owe anybody anything? But when I, in my two years as a council member, having forged a relationship with then-City Attorney James Hahn on some policy issues that we worked together with, gang injunctions, tobacco enforcement programs, trying to curb illegal sales of tobacco to young people, and other things, we had developed a relationship. Plus, as a council member, and through my experiences with Mayor Reardon, with the City Attorney, the Controller, and the council, I saw, at least in my opinion, I knew how important direct city experience was for whoever was going to be the next mayor. And so it was, I believe, an easy decision in that context to support Jim. Publicly, yeah, it did put me at odds with some people. In the long term, you know, I still walk, you know, in some of the same neighborhoods, I still eat in the local restaurants, and I know my constituents--
And they serve you.
They serve me?
No problem.
No, we get, I, here's a way to measure it, in terms of my own district, two ways. My district is 80% Latino now, yet only went two to one for Antonio. I mean, I don't think you can read too much into that, whether people are following me or not following me.
Well, some of those precincts up there were the heaviest votes--
Including when I lived. I realize that. But I also know that people are recognizing how valuable and how beneficial a good relationship with the mayor is. I had a good relationship with Reardon, it meant a lot for my district in the last two years. Now I have a great relationship with Mayor Hahn, and it's going to mean even more in the next couple of years. I was going to say, I endorsed Jim Hahn, months later, filing closed for council district representative in my district, that was up for reelection, and I ran in a post. So I, not to be, one way to look at it is if somebody was really, really upset enough about my decision of who I was backing for mayor, I might have had some competition. But I like to think I still have the faith and confidence of my district to do a good job.
Okay, thank you. I want to ask one more question, and then I think we'll open it to, open it to the audience. It seems that one could argue that the terrorists may have won not just the first round in terms of leveling big buildings and important monuments, but the second round of really knocking the American economy onto its knees. We saw today an announcement of 20,000 layoffs at American Airlines, 20,000 people laid off at United Airlines, 30,000 people laid off at Boeing. The story in the newspaper today is about the waiters and waitresses and bellmen and the people who are connected to the tourist industry, who are now, you know, suffering because travel is gone. Meanwhile, we read in the newspaper that the Airport Commission is going to continue to ban cars from the center of the airport, which is a pretty strong message, I think, that people think it's not yet a safe time to travel, or at least to travel to this airport. So what do you think the city and the appropriate national political response should be to get the economy back on its feet and to send a message that, you know, despite these tragic events, that it's time for us to move forward and for people to return to life as normal?
It's going to be tough. We're going to certainly feel the impact economically for a while. I think in the long term, we will rebound. People will begin to fly again, we already have. LAX is now more than 60% in terms of the number of operations that we were as of last Monday. At LAX, on a daily basis-- At LAX, on a daily basis, before last Tuesday, we had twenty-two hundred operations. That's both takeoffs and nannies combined. That's a lot. Two thousand two hundred planes either coming in and going out. And now, we're back up to more than sixty percent of that. So, that's, you know, roughly about fourteen hundred. That's quite a bit, and still amongst the highest in the country. So, I think we're rebounding. We're going to feel a ripple effect, not only in the airline industry with, you know, airline employees, but travel and tourism in general, the hotels, the car rental companies, other things like that. But, but we will rebound. We will regain a comfort level of traveling to the airport. The, the specific example you mentioned was the central parking facility. FAA is coming out with a series of new security guidelines and security measures. There are now going to be requirements. Most of those things, we had actually already begun to implement at LAX. For example, if any of you have flown out of LAX, you know, you may check in your bags at the ticket counter, and then you go through the metal detector. And there was a police officer, airport police officer assigned to that point. We had chosen to do that as Los Angeles, above and beyond what we were required from FAA. They had never required that before. Now, it's a requirement for the entire country. There's other measures. So, I think the American people will understand that these safety measures are put in place for safety, not necessarily for inconvenience, and will just have to wait that extra hour to actually board the plane. People who want to go to Hawaii will still want to go to Hawaii. People who want, will want to travel to different parts of the country or abroad will still want to. It's a matter of how quickly can we restore the feeling of being able to fly safely. I think by waiting an extra hour, that adds to safety level of being able to do that, and we'll rebound quicker. But right now, we're just, I mean, literally, three, four faxes a day coming from FAA. You know what, this is what we're going to do now. This is the new requirement. This is going to change, and we're just trying to keep up right now.
Okay. Can we take some questions from the audience? We do have microphones set up on either side, if anyone would like to make their way.
You talk a lot about your district, or my district in your case. How do you balance your district's demands and the city's demands, especially as council president, when you have more responsibility to the city?
In part, it is, I believe, promoting that some of the issues in my district are really citywide concerns. You know, I talk a lot about street maintenance and repair. Citywide, that's a crisis, and I won't bore you with the numbers and the statistics, but as an example, as president, you're right. I mean, as a council member, everything we vote on has an impact citywide, not just what we're promoting in terms of our own district. As council president, even more so. First and foremost, as council president, I got to try to take care of my colleagues. Resources they need, help they need, I try to play that role. But then, there's things that are sort of just thrust upon you because we need to navigate through the political and the, and the council process, coming through the appropriate committees, coming to the full council, if it's changes at the airport, investments citywide, the Staples Arena project, for example. You know, well, that's not in my district, but for those who favored it, you know, it's going to have ripple effects and added benefits to more than just that council district. So, do I have a role to play in whether or not that, that is approved, and even before we vote on it, to make sure that it's a responsible policy that we're approving? Those are some of the opportunities that, whether or not I'm the, the author of the motion or the idea, I still am inserted, sometimes by choice, sometimes not by choice.
Another question.
Councilmember, I'm someone who was born and raised in the San Fernando Valley and is willing to admit it.
Where, where in the valley?
Sherman Oaks. But I'm, I'm curious, your position on the succession issue, and how do you think it would affect the city if it actually ever went through?
My position on the succession issue is that, I'll tell you what I used, what I've been telling people for two years. I'm more interested in making things work, not breaking things up. I still believe in the city of Los Angeles. Are we perfect? No. Can we improve? Yes. And that's what I've been working for the last two years. I think it would be a shame if the city, if the San Fernando Valley left and became its own city. You grew up in Sherman Oaks, I grew up in Pacoima, two different communities. But in the next year and a half, the challenge is upon us to convince people that it is, we'll be all better off if the valley stayed with the city of Los Angeles. And again, I think if you took a poll of what people really want and how they're going to measure it, it goes back down to the public safety. Is crime up or down? Do people feel safe in their communities? You know, what are the, what's the quality of the city services being delivered? Are the streets being swept? Is trash being picked up? Is graffiti out of control? Or, or do people feel comfortable? That's my position.
Councilman, I also currently work for a locally elected official and have been doing so for just about three and a half to four years. I was afforded that opportunity through an internship initially at that time here at the University of Southern California. With that in mind, do you have any current internship opportunities available in your office? Because I'm quite sure that's the question that many of the students may raise, because they also, and I agree with you certainly, that you certainly do serve as a huge role model for several other students, not only here, but throughout the county of Los Angeles. So, how can they also get that type of significant exposure in the public arena?
We do have internship opportunities in my office. Some paid, some, I forget to say, the budget can only go so far, not as paid, but we try to make sure that every intern really has good experience. There's, can I brag about you? This is Myra. Myra started out as a volunteer on my campaign, my first campaign, two and a half years ago. And then, we hired her on the campaign because she was doing such a great job. Then, she's now a student here at USC. So, whenever she's able to, I, I wish I can hire her year-round, but on her breaks, she works in my office, or she used to work in my office. And does such a great job that she now works for the ITA, the Information Technology Agency. And pretty soon, she's going to be running that agency. But that's one example. Like I said, you know, we try to provide meaningful experiences in our office, and, you know, we hope or we pray that it leads to bigger and better opportunities. Also, was her name Jennifer Spiro? That was in our office a couple of months ago. We had another intern. This was before I became council president. So, don't just look at opportunities in my office, you've got to look around too, because you never know what's going to happen. We had an intern join us this, early this summer, and I think within her first month, I became council president. So, all of a sudden, she's able to say, I'm interning in the president's office. What kind of an experience or change for her? And you can imagine the chaos of people calling into my office and, you know, wanting to have meetings or attend events and things like that. So, she was, we were able to have her attend some of those meetings on our behalf or prepare briefing papers that I wouldn't have normally had the opportunity to provide that for any intern, but when I became council president, that came about. So, if you're in somebody else's office, just know that something may happen. They may become part of a new committee, or, or a new organization, or get a new title. That makes it really, really exciting unexpectedly.
I encourage some of the students, don't be shy, come on up here and ask questions. And if you're too shy to stand up, we can pass you the mic. Just raise your hand.
Juanita Delonas, AARP District Coordinator for the city and the county of Los Angeles. Communication, and how can we communicate to our diverse population? Specifically, since you supported the neighborhood councils. I live in Rampart Division, which is seventy-two percent Latino and seventeen percent undocumented. We have not been doing outreach in languages, which also, I have Chinatown, we have to do with Koreatown, and we're not doing a good job in communicating.
There's, first of all, there should be the translation, not only services available at meetings, but translation of materials, brochures for distribution. I know that the city can't do it alone. If we did a good job of connecting with people in every community throughout the city, we wouldn't be having these threats of succession, not only in the valley, but in the Hollywood area, in the Harbor area. So, as we were putting the process in place for how we were going to certify neighborhood councils, we also spent a good deal amount of time of talking about how are we going to get the information out there. We made monies available for community-based organizations who know their communities better, who have better networks within the community, and can communicate with the communities better, for them to help put the information out there and help people begin to organize and create eventually neighborhood councils. So, if you'd like, you can take your name and number down and put you in touch with whoever's supposed to be doing outreach in your particular area.
Well, we should be using the media. We haven't had any articles in La Pina, and we have not done anything on television. And so, how are we going to make or educate people?
Has it been for lack of a better? I'm sure a topic of conversation within your classes, I can see you walking, is, I can hold a press conference if I want, but if the camera doesn't show up, you know, whose, whose responsibility is that? It's a two-way street. I have a responsibility to help put information out there, but, you know, we have, have to recognize that the media too, has its way of making decisions as to what to cover, what to print, and what not to. So, it goes both ways.
Then we must have a budget.
Thank you. Could, could I have a question?
Yeah, the first thing I wanted to, the first thing I wanted to do was congratulate you on the great job you did during our recent crisis when the mayor was out of the city. One of the big problems in politics today is getting qualified people to put themselves through the abuse they will have to take, out on the campaign trail and from the press. And I, I had a fellow running for judge who told me, you, you brought, made me think of it, when you said you went from door to door. He knocked on the door and said, I'm running for reelection. I'm Judge so-and-so. And the lady said, I know who you are, USOB. You put my son in prison for twenty years. What advice do you give young people that want to get into politics to go through that campaigning area? Fortunately, I don't have to do it. I'm lucky. But these people are going to have to campaign.
Well, I think the biggest, the biggest motivator or, or drive in wanting to enter public service, whether it's in electric capacity or not, and be willing to put up with some abuse like that, is if you're doing it for the right reasons. You know, I, I like to think I'm still a little idealistic, that I'm still a little naive, because I still believe, and I still have, you know, this vision of, of the city being a great city and wanting to move in that direction. So, if those are the reasons that you want to enter public service, because of you want to change the world, and because there's something you want to accomplish, then that's your focus. And when you get negative feedback of people who are naysayers, or people who, you know, are very skeptical, you know, we, we treat people politely and try to be diplomatic, but you don't let them distract you or take you away from what you're trying to achieve. So, that's my first bit of advice. The other thing is, you know, politicians nowadays, compared to like fifty years ago, you know, all this scrutiny because of the scandals that have taken place, you know, from Nixon on to Gary Condit. And so, yeah, maybe the, the bar has been raised on the standards that we're, we're expected to conduct ourselves by. That, I think, is just reality. But, you know, if you believe you're a good person, and you live your life in a responsible way, and have nothing to hide or nothing to fear, not that I want to put every single bit of my personal life on the front page of the newspaper, but, you know, I, I believe I'm a good person, doing what I'm doing for the right reasons, and, you know, people can write about, you know, the fact that I go to my mom's house every Sunday, okay? You know, I, I don't, I don't fear anything being exposed or anything. So, that takes a lot of pressure off. But I'm sure if I were to conduct myself the way others who are probably responsible for politician being a negative term did, then, then I couldn't sleep at night.
Can I ask a related question to that? Were you bothered during that mayoral campaign by that Vignali ad that, that seemed to characterize Antonio Villarreal as soft on crime, or seemed to play on racial anxieties and fears about persons of color in LA? And if so, did you exercise the opportunity to tell your friend, Jim Han, that you had some problems with that ad?
I knew that it was a very controversial ad, and a lot of people said, you've got to take a strong look at it, you've got to take a close look at it, it's right on the edge. You know, I don't want to pick apart the mayoral election, because we'd be here all night, but at the end of the day, it was a fact. It was not an accusation. It was not a, a letter had been written. It was on somebody's letterhead, and it said what it said. And I believe that was the strongest message that came out of that ad.
So, would you have trouble running that ad in your reelection campaign? On an ad like that?
I'm not running against Antonio Villarreal.
Well, but the question is, you thought that ad went to the line, but didn't cross it. So, what you're saying is, and running an ad like that wouldn't trouble Alex Padilla?
I, I can't say yes or no. I'm not in that situation. I think every campaign is different, every situation's different.
Okay. I, I understand that Cardinal Mahoney has scolded Mayor Lactan and his advisors that he thought the ad crossed the line, and thought it was destructive to community building in LA. Now, Cardinal Mahoney obviously was also, had also written a letter on behalf of Mr. Vignali, so maybe his response was just a little bit of defensiveness on that point. But, but I'm curious, if, if we're about trying to convince young people about civic engagement, what responsibility other elected officials have to step forward and say, there are places we won't go in our campaign, and, and, you know, there are things that we just don't think are really of probative value to helping people decide the next mayor?
As far as my personal experience goes, you know, I was, in my very first campaign, I made the pledge and, and kept the commitment to not be negative. It was not going to be a negative campaign, not only because I disagreed with that, but because I felt my community, the district I lived in deserved better. They deserved to have a positive campaign focused on messages. And I won the first time. Second go around, you know, I was blessed enough to not have any opposition. So, I haven't been in a position where, you know, it's a real close campaign, you know, you've got to sort of hit harder than, than you may want to. I haven't been personally in that position yet.
Okay. Can we take another question?
I'm Dina Perez. I come here to USC. I'm also from Pacoima, so I grew up there, and I currently live there now. My question is, what thoughts you have, like in the city of Pacoima, East LA, Boyle Heights, all of those areas, where a lot of students aren't very focused on higher education, so to speak? Like USC, for example, I know San Fernando High School, where I went, a lot of those universities don't go out to our high schools, really don't think we're college-bound. What are your thoughts and ideas about doing that? Not only in, in our area, Pacoima, but in other areas, where students are not looked at as college-bound students, intelligent students? And how do we get these people to start thinking that way? And how do we get our students, or our people from there, from those cities, to actually start thinking college and higher education?
We just, we have to get active. As a council member, or as a city official, I think a big criticism a lot of us get is, well, you're on the city council, you're not a school board member, so why are you talking about education? You know, why, why are you addressing educational issues that's outside your jurisdiction, that's outside your authority? From a policy perspective or a political leadership point of view, I think we have a responsibility to do so because the future of our city depends on a well-educated workforce of tomorrow, and they're sitting in our classrooms today. But I also speak from personal experience, because I also went to San Fernando High School. And from there, I had the opportunity to go on to MIT. I had applied here, I was going to come play baseball, but I decided to go back east. The first person ever to go from San Fernando High School to MIT graduated two years before I did. And that's the only reason I even applied to MIT. I didn't even know what MIT was. MIT never came to recruit me. He was the first, he had a positive experience. He came back to the high school. He encouraged a couple more people to apply, so we did. You know, and we got in, we went, we came back, encouraged more people to apply. And ever since then, you've had a handful of students, at least every other year, if not every year ago, not just to MIT. We were able to open up doors for Brown University, and Harvard, and Princeton, and some of the other schools back east. So, for those of you here at USC who want more people from your high schools coming to USC, I encourage you to go back and visit your high schools and spread the word that the opportunities are real, that USC is achievable, despite what they may be hearing, or what they may be feeling in their schools. Even now, as a council member, I go and speak to classrooms whenever I get a chance, not just high school, but middle school and elementary school students, because we have to set that positive example, and that, that experience that they can touch, that, you know, if, if Alex can do it, I can do it too, because he grew up around here, he came to these schools, he did all of that. By the way, just to put it in context, San Fernando High School celebrated their centennial about eight years ago. And I mentioned, this school is now over a hundred years old, and the first person ever to go from San Fernando High School to MIT was in nineteen eighty-eight. the first person ever to go from San Fernando High School to MIT was in nineteen eighty-eight. So that high school had a long history without ever sending people to schools of that cal, you know, of that caliber, that type of reputation. So we all have a responsibility to turn that around. I also want to recognize that there's teachers and counselors in schools right now that aren't helping, because it's too often a story that's shared by myself, by friends of mine, that went to San Fernando five years after I did, ten years before I did. Oh, don't apply there, you'll never get in. You guys aren't good enough. Teachers and counselors saying that. Why don't you just apply here? You know, you'll be okay. No, no, we need the teachers and the counselors are going to push students to be the best they can be, and to dream, to reach for stars.
Another question.
Councilman Padilla, grown up in the valley, I mean, I was around all the different races and whatnot. And, I mean, obviously, melting, Los Angeles as a whole is a melting pot. But spending time in the city itself this summer, with actually an African-American friend of mine, I, I really experienced a lot of tension between the races and, and distinct racial lines. And I was, I mean, it kind of caught me off guard, because, you know, it wasn't like that in sleepy old Burbank, you know? It's, in the city, the, the racial lines are a lot more distinct, and there's a lot more tension. And I just wanted to see what steps were being taken by the councilmen and by the city to improve racial relations within the city.
I see Joel Hicks in the back here. He's the director of our Human Relations Commission at the city of Los Angeles. So first of all, we have to recognize that the city has prioritized it enough to establish a commission on human relations to try to address it. And there's a number of programs that the city commits resources for, not just the commission itself, but in particular, Days of Dialogue is a program that was initiated several years ago by council member Mark Foley-Thomas, my colleague who actually represents this area, that brings people together of not just different races, but different communities, different backgrounds, different perspectives, to just get people talking. I think one of the other good things that we can do is point to the fact that, you know, there are incidents that happen throughout the city and throughout the country. But there's also day-to-day things that are happening that are good. You've got kids, white, black, brown, everybody, you know, going to school together, you know, playing in the parks together every day, you know, people in the workplace, you know, working side by side. There's a lot more positive than negative out there that we need to highlight, that we need to learn from.
I think we have time for one more question.
Hello. My name is Sharon Harvey. I work for a corporation that's had a ten-year exemplary partnership with the Los Angeles Unified School District. Today, I was quite disheartened. I actually work for the Education Division of this company. I was on the campus of the high school that I graduated from, Susan Miller Dorsey High, which I visit quite frequently. I was in a classroom with fifty students and one teacher. I passed down a hallway, and there were over a hundred students waiting because they had not been assigned to classes yet because of a teacher shortage on the campus. My question is, is there a collaborative agreement, or is there some plan between the council and the school district to attract qualified educators to the city of Los Angeles?
Again, a tough one, because the educators, the teachers, we need in LAUSD, and the city of LA doesn't train, doesn't train teachers. The way that we've been able to help education, because as much as a teacher shortage, it's also classroom space and a classroom seat crunch and crisis in the city of Los Angeles, where so many schools are on year-round tracks. So you have fifty kids in one classroom, when that's unconscionable, unheard of in other cities. So the city of LA is trying to help in identifying school sites for new schools and school construction. So you can build a classroom, the schools and the classroom space, to alleviate that situation. But I think we need to encourage further partnerships between LAUSD and the Cal States and the UCs. And we all can do our part, not just going back to schools to encourage kids to go to high school. But we all have a social responsibility to promote teaching as an honorable profession. You go to other countries, teachers and professors are esteemed right up here. You know, in our society, to generalize a little bit, you know, we don't put teachers on that pedestal. And when you can go into other professions and earn more than a teacher does, you know, we have to recognize where our priorities are. It was real controversial last year, when the school district was giving, or proposing to give teachers a big pay raise. It got painted as, oh, the union is getting greedy, and they don't deserve such a big one-time jump in salaries. But I think it was part of the formula, part of the mix of making the teaching profession more attractive. There's other national programs, like Teach for America, and things like that, that give added incentives for teachers who either teach in impoverished areas, or for people who go into teaching in the communities that they come from. Because there's nothing more powerful, and my sister's a living example, nothing more powerful than to have a teacher who grew up in the same community that you grew up in.
Excuse me one second. Councilman, I want to thank you for coming to the Annenberg School. Give you this small thank you.
My pleasure.
We, we have a continuing series of meetings like this in Annenberg.
Can I wear this Saturday?
Absolutely. We'll expect you to. And we would hope that you would return and be a part of another at Annenberg event.
My pleasure. I really enjoyed this. Thank you.